I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 24th, 2020 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. I would ask that we all please silence any electronic devices and make noise. If you must take a phone call, please exit the chambers and take it on the outside in the hallway. If an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn or right-hand turn and go down the stairs at the end of the hall. If you need assistance, we will be glad to provide it to you. Just ask. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. At this time, I'll call on Associate Pastor Bill Reed of Parkway Church of God for our invocation.
Father, we thank you for your goodness, your love, your mercy and grace you extend to us every day. Thank you for the leadership of our city. Thank you for our mayor, Jake Day. Thank you for the members of the city council and those involved in city government. I thank you for leaders that want your blessing and directions on the affairs of our city. As they meet, I ask your guidance and direction. I ask you to guide them on this journey to do what is best for the city. I pray you will give them insight and revelation for the needs and the challenges. I pray you'll give them creative and innovative ideas to lead the city forward. As the wise man Solomon instructed us, "Trust in the Lord with all thy heart and lean not unto thy own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy path." Thank you, Lord, for these favors that we ask in your precious name, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Reed. Please rise now and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, guests, thank you so much for being here. Before I read this proclamation, I'd just like to take a second. About forty-five minutes ago, some of our news stations released information and a story that I think affects all of us in Wycomico County. And I'd like to address it. Our county executive communicated to the public that he is suffering from liver cancer. It sounds serious. It's obviously serious. It's affecting seventy percent of the mass of his liver. This is obviously troubling news, not only to his family, but county staff, county leaders, and I'm sure every citizen. So I want Mr. Culver to know that we stand with him through his battle, that our community is with him, that city leadership is here to support, and those of us that work in this building with him every day are here to support him. So Bob, if you're watching, we're here for you. So I am here tonight to read a proclamation, yes, but also to make a declaration. And we are honored to, once again, this month, declare that we are celebrating African-American history in our community. And I'd like to point out a couple of things that are important in not only the national movement, but the community movement, to ensure that we don't forget this history. In February 1926, noted Black author, historian, and father of Black history, Carter G. Woodson introduced Negro History Week, the precursor to Black History Month, now African-American History Month, in order to highlight significant contributions that African-Americans had made toward the development of civilization. A National African-American History Month is observed every February, and it celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors, and is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States by emphasizing Black history and its cultural contributions to American life. And the theme for this year's observance is African-Americans and the Vote, which recognizes the struggle for voting rights among both Black men and women throughout American history. And it coincides with the 150th anniversary of the 1870 ratification of the 15th Amendment, giving African-Americans the right to vote because that right, quote, "shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude." And it's important to note that this year's observance also coincides with the 150th anniversary of the first African-American to serve in the United States Congress, Mississippi Republican Hiram Rhodes Revels, who served a one-year term in the United States Senate in 1870. And the city of Salisbury continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community and which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our society and way of life. Now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as National African-American History Month in our city, and I encourage all citizens to join as we proudly honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our city, state, nation, and global communities. And I would invite Kelsey to come up from the NAACP to receive this proclamation.
I'm standing in place of Mary Ashanti, who was unable to attend today. And I'm the second vice president for the branch. The city of Salisbury has always been very supportive, at least since I've been part of the NAACP, of the efforts of the Wycomico County NAACP. People in the council attend our meetings, participate, make suggestions, and it's really great to see the leadership of this city support the NAACP. Ironically, as we're talking about history, I don't know if many of you heard that Catherine Johnson, who was featured in the movie Hidden Figures, and she was a mathematician at NASA, that she died today. And two days ago, B. Smith, who was a model and also owned a restaurant and developed Alzheimer's about three years ago, she died. So we're still adding people to our history, whether they're above the earth or below the earth. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I call our youth development specialist for the city, Jeremichael Mitchell, to the podium for some introductions.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening. This is our youth development, Army Youth Development Specialist Jeremichael Mitchell. This is our youth civics council. These young ladies represent the new revamped vision that we have for the youth civics council. Each one is going to introduce themselves because we want to teach them that public speaking is very key and important, so they're going to introduce themselves in their position. And our president is going to speak at the end, and then I'll wrap things up.
My name is Tanira Jones, and I go to Bennett Middle.
My name is Jadeja McCarter. I go to Wycomico High School, and I'm the vice president.
My name is Armani Russell. I go to Parkside High School, and I'm the assistant secretary.
My name is Denisha George, and I go to Bennett High.
My name is Leah Campbell, and I go to Delmar Middle and High School.
Hi, my name is Alicia George. I'm a senior at Bennett High, and I hold the position of member-at-large.
My name is Hannah Kim, and I go to Bennett High, and I'm treasurer.
Good evening, my name's Zoe DePasque, and I'm the president. Today, I want to talk to you about our two initiatives, the Blessing Boxes and the Bullying Campaign. Our Blessing Boxes will have two in total in neighborhoods that may need a meal or suffer from poverty. This will help with kids in poverty at schools providing a meal or a snack they may need, as well as the homeless population in the community. For our Bullying Campaign, we will raise bully awareness to help bring awareness to the two losses we have in our community from students who have committed suicide. We feel that this is important to bring awareness to this issue by having people sign a pledge to be against bullying. On April 17th, we'll be at the third Friday to also give info and have people sign up to be a pledge. Thank you.
All right, can we give these young ladies a hand? The importance of our youth civics council is they have other initiatives, but those were the main two that we wanted to speak on, and we wanted to make sure that we introduced them before we fully got into work into our community, to the council, to the mayor, and to the city execs, so that they could see who we were working with. We have a very diverse group, as you can see, from all over our community, and the objective now is to just start putting in work in our community, and we look forward to it. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we get a picture of Mr. Mitchell and the members of the council?
Definitely.
And while you're heading that way, can I just say, so the youth civics council that Mr. Mitchell runs is another example of how the city of Salisbury is working to bring youth into, engage young people into the decision-making process in their community, empower them, uplift them, and it's not the only one. So Jeremichael, thank you for the great work that you continue to do.
guys, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremichael. Appreciate it. They're welcome to stay. They're welcome to stay if they want. It's up to you. It won't be that long. Unless you have homework to do.
This could be a part of the homework.
It could be.
There you go.
All right, this time, I'll call for a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Carter.
Good evening. The consent agenda this evening consists of the February 3rd, 2020 work session minutes, the February 10th, 2020 legislative session minutes, resolution number 3003, approving the reappointment of Shawn Jester to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term ending February 2023. Resolution number 3004, approving the reappointment of Michael Dyer to the Disability Advisory Committee for the term ending March 2022. Resolution number 3005, approving the reappointment of Susan Carey to the Elections Board for the term ending February 2026. Resolution number 3006, approving the appointment of Ron Pagano to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the term ending February 2023. Resolution number 3007, approving the reappointment of Robert Lorre to the Revolving Loan Advisory Committee for the term ending February 2024. Resolution number 3008, approving the appointment of Cassandra Duncan to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for the term ending February 2023. Approving the Manufacturing Exemption Request for Clean Air Filters LLC. Approving the Manufacturing Exemption Request for Smith's Interconnect Microwave Components, Inc. That concludes the consent agenda.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. If...
John?
I live right now.
Okay. If Shawn Jester, Michael Dyer, Susan Carey, Ron Pagano, Robert Lorre, or Cassandra Duncan are here, please stand and be recognized. We thank these individuals for volunteering and for serving on these very important committees. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. First item this evening is an award of bid for ITB 20-102. That's the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids from qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary to extend sewer service to 1503 and 1505 Mount Herman Road. The majority of project funding, $120,000, is projected to be provided through the State Revolving Loan Fund, which is administered by the Maryland Department of the Environment. The city followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting the solicitation on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. One vendor, Chesapeake Turf LLC, submitted a bid by the due date and time of September 12th, 2019, at 2:30 p.m. The bid was deemed responsive and responsible, but it exceeded the combined funding of the city's available budget and the amount of the SRF funding. Per Section 2.32.050(c) (1) (d) of the Salisbury Code of Ordinances, in the case of only one responsive bidder, a procurement contract may be negotiated with that one bidder. Therefore, the city chose to review and address those areas that could be safely value engineered while maintaining the integrity of the project. The results are as follows. Chesapeake Turf initially submitted a bid of $206,111. After value engineering, the total of that bid is $186,106. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB 20-102 to Chesapeake Turf LLC in the amount of $186,106, contingent upon MDE funding approval and city council acceptance of the funds. Additional funding to support the balance of the project is available in the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Project Account noted in your packet.
Any questions? Okay.
Second item is award of bid for RFP A-20-15 Stormwater Management Support Services. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals from qualified and experienced firms to provide stormwater project planning, design, construction administration, and inspection, grant writing, and permit compliance. The procurement department followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. A total of 13 vendors submitted proposals by the due date and time of January 7th, 2020, at 2:30 p.m. The vendors' technical proposals were evaluated by committee according to the criteria established in the solicitation document, and pricing was open for those proposals that received a minimum qualifying score of at least 75% of the technical points available. The departmental memo provides a recap of that evaluation criteria and the resulting composite scores. To obtain the most qualified firms for the various tasks, the solicitation document specified that the city may choose to contract with multiple firms if it's in the best interest of the city to do so. To that end, the four most highly ranked vendors had well-conceived, detailed-driven project approaches that indicated areas of expertise for which the firm would be best suited to undertake the necessary work. The procurement department concurs with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development and thereby requests council's approval to award RFP A-20-105 Stormwater Management Support Services to the following vendors: Bayland Consultants and Designers, Wallace Montgomery &amp; Associates, Hazen &amp; Sawyer, and Biohabitats. If the award of this solicitation is approved by city council, contracts will be issued to these four vendors, and purchase orders will be issued on a task order basis. The Department of Infrastructure and Development has budgeted $135,500 in FY '20 for all stormwater support services resulting from this award. There are sufficient funds to cover this procurement in the stormwater architectural and engineering project account noted in your packet.
Any questions?
So how is this going to work when you have four vendors? Are they each going to be for specified tasks?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We do this on several different contracts for architectural and engineering services in general, where we have four to six vendors sort of on an on-call basis, that when we have a task that fits their area of expertise, then we issue a purchase to them for a very specific task, and then the rates are per their proposal.
And it will be supervised by one of our engineers?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. The next item is award of bid for RFP A-20-104 Generator Maintenance. This is a citywide contract. The Department of Procurement solicited bids for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the routine maintenance, emergency repair, and minor upgrades to generators supporting the city facilities. The city anticipates spending approximately $40,000 on miscellaneous generator services under this contract. That's per fiscal year. This award will constitute an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract. The services provided to the city will be of an on-call nature with no minimum purchase implied or guaranteed. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms, contingent upon sufficient budget appropriation and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. Two vendors replied by the due date and time of January 8th, 2020, at 2:30 p.m., and their proposals were evaluated according to the criteria specified in the solicitation document. On my memo, I did list that criteria and the weight of each. J&amp;M Generator Service out of Salisbury, Maryland, received a composite score of 75.33, and CTN LLC out of Salem, Virginia, received a composite score of 55.33. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract RFP A-20-104 to J&amp;M Generator Service, with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. Again, purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed by the department requesting contract services.
Questions?
Well, I see where Salem, Virginia, lost 20 points. It's five hours away. Wow.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Yep. Next item is award of bid for Invitation to Bid ITB A-20-107. That's the Fire Department and the EMS uniforms. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to solicit bids for Fire Department and EMS uniforms. This category of goods consists of daily work shirts and trousers, the Class A uniform, including dress shirts, dress shoes, and hats, and appropriate hardware such as badges, bars, and pins. This award will constitute a requirements contract, as goods will be ordered as needed, with no minimum purchase implied or guaranteed. The amount specified in the bid document is an estimate, and the city is under no obligation to buy any set amount. Additionally, this solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for up to two one-year terms, contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and on both the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. A total of three vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of January 16th, 2020, at 2:30 p.m. Maryland Fire Equipment Corporation, Irvin H. Han Company, and F&amp;F A Jacobs &amp; Sons, Incorporated. That was a tongue twister. As a multi-vendor award solicitation, contracts will be issued to these three vendors, and purchase orders will be issued as uniforms are needed. The Salisbury Fire Department has an annual budget of approximately $40,000, with funding available in the Salisbury Fire Department Uniform Account noted in your packet.
Questions or comments?
I do have a question. Okay, you're ordering uniforms, but does each one of these have the uniforms or just different hats or...
Different parts of the uniform.
Parts of the uniform, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, not one vendor could provide all of it.
Right, everything, okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. And last item. Change order number one to Invitation to Bid ITB 19-117. That's the Phase One Manhole Rehabilitation. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number one in the amount of $23,960 for Invitation to Bid ITB 19-117 Phase One Manhole Rehabilitation. This change order provides for revisions to the method of repair at the city's request. It applies an appropriate traffic control schedule and removes repair work on four manholes that have been identified as not in need of repair at this time. Funding is available in the Water Sewer Project Account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to process change order number one as noted above to the contractor awarded the original bid, which was Pleasants Construction,
Any questions? Costs a lot of money to rehab a manhole.
There was actually savings to this, where the increase came in was in traffic control. So when it was initially bid, there was only, say, one unit of traffic control, but we needed multiple days of traffic control. So...
No, it's fine. Any questions? Okay. Okay. That's the last one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call the motion now for the award of bids. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. This evening, we're gonna have a public hearing on Charter Amendment Resolution CAR number 2020-1 to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding exceptions to competitive biddings in Article 16 SC 16-3. Ms. Glantz will give us the amendment, but before we start, anybody that's in the room that is going to speak or wishes to speak during this public hearing regarding this item, please stand and be sworn in by Mrs. Carter. That's easy. Okay. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve CAR number 2020-1 as read.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Ms. Glantz?
Good evening. Charter Amendment Resolution number 2020-1, a resolution to amend the charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding exceptions to competitive bidding in Article... That takes me back. 16 SC 16-3. Whereas Article 16 of the current Salisbury City Charter specifies items or situations that are exempt from the requirement for competitive bidding, and whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the city charter to add exemptions to competitive bidding, which will allow the city to operate in a more efficient manner.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and that is at 6:32 p.m. Anybody that has changed their mind and wishes to testify? Hearing none, I'll close the meeting of the public hearing at 16:33. 6:33 p.m.
That'd be 18:33.
Get your military time right.
I'm sorry. I've been out of shape for a while.
Can you read Roman numerals, too? I can't.
I'll now call the vote on CAR number 2020-1. All those in favor of the charter amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. This CAR will become effective in fifty days, April the 14th of 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3009.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory.
Resolution number 3009, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period of FY '21 to FY '25, whereas it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outline needs and setting forth a plan for financing those needs. And whereas the development of such a plan helps to ensure that the city's short-range capital needs are being addressed in a responsible manner, helps to place those needs in a priority order, and helps anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs. And whereas the city's staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '21 and ending in fiscal year '25, and whereas the city council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can best be reasonably anticipated. Sorry, I get excited and don't trail off.
Okay. I thought you were seeing if we were still awake, but... Questions or comments? I do have a comment. The preparation and the presentation of this was excellent, and I'd like to let everybody know that we spent time going over these things in a work session, and that's where it was discussed. And there is a priority order of where the money should be spent and placed. Public safety is obviously a key one, but there are other things like infrastructure. And not only that, but we also have guidelines as to how much money that we are going to use from the capital expense funds from our debt, and those were all taken into consideration, and this is an excellent plan. We had very good comments from each of the council people, and we're pleased that it hopefully is gonna pass in a couple seconds. Anything else? Mr. Mayor?
May I? Mr. President? Yeah, I just wanna echo, you know, I think the public explanation of what a capital improvement plan is, why to do it, and what ours does, and how it differs from others, and how it differs from ours past is important. So, I appreciate you bringing that up. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the capital improvement plan, a five-year plan for what infrastructure investments we're going to make, what significant things we're going to fund, generally over and above $25,000 apiece, and usually things that are capital in nature, physical in nature, you know, is an important distinction to make to folks out there wondering, you know, what government is doing, what city government is doing. I think it's also important to note that our CIP has reduced in scope significantly by more than seventy percent in the last four years, and part of that is not just because we have reduced expenditures, but because we have aligned it to what we can actually afford. So, rather than saying that we're planning on, you know, paving your street, or building that building, or repairing that bridge in a given year, now we can say, no, that's realistic. Our plan is realistic. It's also worth noting that I think that the Government Finance Officers Association last week awarded the City of Salisbury for the third consecutive year the Budget Presentation Award. Now, this is not the CIP Presentation Award, but it's an award that is for the design and layout and communication effectiveness of the budget document, and the same person and people responsible for the budget documents are responsible for the CIP and have worked really hard to ensure that it's easy to understand. It's got pictures, it's got clickable links, so you can find everything. You can click on, you know, something in the chart at the beginning and find it all the way to the detail page deep in the document. And all that matters because, again, you know, we're not playing with monopoly money. You know, every decision we make, every penny we spend is somebody's hard-earned, you know, penny that we are responsible for, ensuring that public services, public infrastructure, it goes back into serving the same citizens who provide it. So, I want to say thank you to those involved in getting us those awards, you know, Chris Demone, and Becca Brown, and Keith Corddry, and Keith's team at Finance, Olga and Sandy and everybody at Finance, and then I want to thank the council for working with us every step of the way to ensure that those documents reflect the priorities of our citizens. So, thank you to each of you. Thank you to the staff, and thank you for all of your input and guidance with respect to the adoption of the CIP.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution number 3009, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is four to zero. We have another public hearing right now for a text amendment on ordinance number 2578 for the second reading. Anybody who wishes to testify in this public hearing, please stand now and be sworn in.
Okay.
It's your time to shout.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I do. Okay.
I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2578.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman, please read the ordinance.
Yes, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 12.20 Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Natural Resources Program, Sections Point 010A, Point 010B, C, and Point 020A, Point 110A, Point 110B, Point 120B, Point 102B, Point 50, Point 120B, Point 92, Point 140A, 2D, Point 190B, Point 260C, Point 270B, Point 280A1, Point 290D, Point 300A, Point 310A, Point 320, Point 350C5, Point 410B, Point 530, and Point 530E of the Salisbury Municipal Code by deleting the references to the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development and replacing with the Department of Infrastructure and Development correcting references to COMAR and by adding Article 19, Section Point 540 to add a section for fees and costs, and an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY 2020 to establish fees for the critical area program. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury reorganized departmental structure of the City of Salisbury in 2017, and whereas section in the municipal code dealing with the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Natural Resources Program cannot be altered without the prior approval of the state, and whereas the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development was eliminated as part of the reorganization structure of the City of Salisbury, and whereas the responsibilities of this department for the planning and zoning are handled by the newly-created Department of Infrastructure and Development, and whereas the State of Maryland has reorganized the Code of Maryland Regulations known as COMAR, thereby making the prior references incorrect, and whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury desire to correct COMAR references within the city code, and whereas Wycomico County currently administers the Critical Area Natural Resources Program for Wycomico County and the city, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires that the Department of Infrastructure and Development administer the Critical Areas Natural Resources Program for areas located within the city corporate boundary, and whereas ordinance 2541 set fees for FY 2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to amend the 2020 fee schedule to establish fees for the critical area programs so that they may be collected in FY 2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the 2020 fee schedule be amended by adding the attached fee schedule now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 12.20 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. And I assume you would like me to spare you reading all the details?
Yes, I think that would be good.
And so, basically, those sections that we mentioned were changing the names to correct them, and we're establishing a fee schedule so that when people do apply, we'll know what they owe. And the fee schedule is found following line 251.
At this time, at 6:42 or 18:42, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing at 6:43 p.m. I'll call the vote on ordinance number 2578. All those in favor of ordinance 2578, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Four to zero. Did you guys get all that? You understood? Because there's a test after this. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2577 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of FY '20 General Fund Budget to appropriate the funds received from the Heron Agility Group for the purchase of K-9 bulletproof vests, whereas Ms. Denise Jest of the Heron Agility Group wishes to donate $1,500 to the Salisbury Police Department to be used for the purchase of police K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas funds received from the Heron Agility Group in the amount of $1,500 will directly benefit the Salisbury Police Department K-9 program by purchasing K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department requests that these funds be placed in the SPD K-9 Animal Supplies Account, which will be used to purchase K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that sees fiscal year 2020 General Fund Budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Increase the General Fund Revenue Account by $1,500 and increase the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments?
What's the cost per vest?
It would be approximately $1,500.
And Chief, we have one more K-9 that does not have a vest, is that correct?
No, at this time, we just have this one that's outstanding. This would be the last one.
And then all the K-9s have vests?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay.
If I may, before the council votes...
Go right ahead.
Mr. President, I also want to thank, I want to thank not only this group, but the efforts of Allison Clark Niles to provide vests to Salisbury Police Department's K-9 officers. Ms. Niles lost her brother-in-law, Dr. Iggy DiNardo, who many of us know, and recently a doctor in our area who recently passed. So, I just wanted to thank the Niles, and Clark, and DiNardo families for their efforts to support our K-9 officers.
You're here. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2577 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2579 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement and accept a grant of $100,000 from the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Bike Ways Program for the design and construction of the West Side Bike Network, and approving an amendment of the FY '20 budget to allocate said funds for the purposes of implementation. Whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation has a Maryland Bike Ways Program for providing grant funds to support and expedite projects improving bicycle and pedestrian transportation in the state, and whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation and the city have been working together to improve bicycle connectivity throughout the City of Salisbury, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to implement a bike route along Isabella Street and Lake Street as part of a wider West Side Bike Network with the intent of connecting cyclists on the west side to the larger network, and whereas the project will enhance bicycle safety and access to the population of the city residing west of the Wycomico River, and whereas the Maryland Bike Ways Program has awarded a grant in the amount of $100,000 to provide for the design and implementation of the West Side Bike Network Phase One, and whereas the city shall accept the grant in form of reimbursements and transfer those funds from the MDOT reimbursement account to the Bike Ways Capital Projects Account, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that Salisbury, Maryland does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement, not yet dated, but to be filled in, accepting the project term and definition of the matching funds for the betterment of the city and its residents, and accepts the grant of $100,000 from the Maryland Bike Ways Program to design and implement the funding for the West Side Bike Network Phase One, and further authorizes the grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate Bike Ways Capital Projects Account. That will be an increase in the Maryland Bike Ways Program Revenue Account of $100,000, and an increase in the Maryland Bike Ways Program Grant Expense Account by the same amount.
Questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
Although it's not articulated in the ordinance itself, it should go without saying that this will also be required to be consistent with the 2015 Bike Master Plan. So, the design and the solution, in other words, there are several different ways that bike lanes can be articulated, and in the master plan itself, it says specifically which street will have which solution, and so this has to be consistent with that already adopted master plan. Just thought that's worth pointing out.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance numbers 2579 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2580 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY 2020, whereas ordinance number 2541 set fees for 2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to establish fees for small wireless facilities constructed under license to encumber agreement for private utilities and public easements in rights of way, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the attached fee schedule will be added to ordinance 2541 so that they may be collected in FY 2020, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 amended FY 2020 fee schedule be adopted by the city of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended, and be it further enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Questions, comments?
And the fee schedule is attached there, too.
Sorry. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2580 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2581 for the second reading.
So move. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury requiring a permit for placement of facilities or utilities in the city's rights of way and adopting specific regulations applicable to the above-ground facilities, including communications facilities, small cell facilities, and wireless support structures in the rights of way, whereas the city desires to establish general procedures and standards consistent with all applicable federal, state, and local laws for the issuance of permits in the city's rights of way, and to establish additional criteria applicable to above-ground facilities, including communications facilities, small cell facilities, and wireless support structures in the city's rights of way, and to ensure that all above-ground facilities are carefully designed, constructed, modified, maintained, and removed when no longer in conformance with all applicable health and safety regulations, whereas the city seeks to enhance the ability of utility providers to install facilities in the city quickly, effectively, and efficiently so that residents, businesses, and visitors benefit from the service available while still preserving the character of the city's neighborhoods and corridors, and whereas the reasonably regulated and orderly development of facilities in the public rights of way is desirable, but unregulated and disorderly deployment represents a threat to the health, welfare, safety, environment, and property values of the community, now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the city of Salisbury that the general requirements on the license to encumber agreement, which is incorporated herein and made a part hereof by reference or hereby adopted, and that the director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development is authorized to adopt such other rules and regulations as shall be consistent with the code, the license to encumber, and other applicable state and federal laws, and be it further enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that the ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And the license to encumber form is attached with all of the specific requirements that the applicants will be held to.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2581 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2583 for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Who's the second, I'm sorry? Ms. Gregory? Ms. Jackson? Sorry. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury requiring that certain single-user restrooms in the city be made available to all individuals regardless of gender, requiring that certain single-user restrooms use gender-inclusive signage to identify the restroom, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date, whereas the city of Salisbury seeks to provide all citizens privacy and safety with regard to being able to utilize available single-user restrooms, and whereas requiring certain single-user restrooms to be made available for anybody's use will further protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury that the municipal code of the city of Salisbury is hereby amended by adding a new Chapter 9.12 to Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare to read as follows. And Chapter 9.12 is entitled Public Restrooms, and the 9.12.010 definitions says in this chapter, the following terms have the meaning indicated, and under B, gender-inclusive signage is defined as gender-inclusive signage means a sign identifying a restroom that does not indicate a specific gender such as a restroom, bathroom, toilet, family-use restroom, gender-neutral, gender-inclusive, or a symbol indicating the restroom's availability for the use by any individual regardless of gender. Place of public accommodation is defined as having the meaning stated in the state government Article 20-301, place of public accommodation is defined therein. And a public single-user restroom means a single occupancy restroom for public use with at least one water closet and with an outer door that can be locked by the occupant. Public single-user restroom does not include any private restroom in a residence, apartment, hotel, or hospital, or a restroom only available for a private room or office. Under 9.12.020, requirements for a single-user restroom, any public single-user restroom in a commercial or industrial establishment, a place of public accommodation, or a city-owned or city-occupied building, must be made available for use by individuals of any gender and identified with gender-inclusive signage. Department to enforce the enforcement of this chapter shall be conducted by enforcement officers designated by the Housing and Community Development Department, and enforcement by citation. A citation under this section may only be issued after the issuance of a written warning and a failure to correct the violation within 30 days of the date of the warning. Paragraph two, in addition to any other civil remedy or enforcement procedure, any person found in violation of the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $100 per violation in accordance with 1.16 of the Salisbury City Municipal Code. Each day of violation continued shall be deemed a separate offense. And the issuance of a municipal infraction citation to enforce this chapter does not preclude pursuing any other civil remedy or enforcement action authorized by law.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2583 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2584 for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 20 general fund budget to appropriate insurance proceeds received in FY 20 toward the purchase of a new vehicle for the police fleet. Whereas the Salisbury Police Unit 1601, a 2014 Ford Fusion Vehicle Identification Number, which I will skip reading, was involved in a motor vehicle accident and declared a total loss, and whereas the insurance proceeds from the loss of Unit 1601 total $12,300, and whereas the Salisbury Police Unit 1482, a 2014 Chevy Caprice, was involved in a motor vehicle accident and declared a total loss, and whereas the insurance proceeds from the loss of Unit 1482 total $12,456, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting the insurance proceeds for vehicles 1601 and 1482 in the amount of $24,756 be placed in police services vehicle account, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated from the insurance proceed toward purchase of a new vehicle for the Salisbury Police Department, and whereas the appropriations necessary for the vehicle purchase must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget is hereby amended with an increase in insurance proceeds by $24,756 and an increase in the police department's police services vehicle account by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2584 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is four zero. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2585 for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.32, purchases and sales to amend the procedure for public notice and bids, and to add contract change orders, and to amend Chapter 2.36, disposition of surplus or unused real property, to amend the definitions of cost and inventory of surplus supplies, and to amend the procedure for the selection and award of proposals and bids. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title II of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendments that will keep Title II current, and whereas the director of procurement may amend the rules adopted pursuant to Chapter 2.32 purchases and sales of the Salisbury Municipal Code in accordance with specific provisions of 2.32.090, authority to establish rules and regulations, and whereas the mayor and city council requested that the director of procurement periodically review 2.32 and 2.36 in light of existing procedural practices and inputs from the city council and department directors, and whereas the Salisbury Municipal Code contains requirements for competitive bidding and awarding of contracts and requires council approval for all contracts in excess of $100,000, and whereas after a contract award has been approved by the council, contracts sometimes require changes that may alter the work to be performed, the timeframe of the project, and the cost of the contract, known as change orders, and whereas there is currently no provision in the Salisbury Municipal Code that requires council approval of change orders, and whereas the procedure and selection for disposition of surplus property contains references to bids and proposals in different sections of 2.36, and whereas disposition of unused real estate currently mandates the inclusion of certain provisions in a disposition contract and later provides that said provisions shall be included as considered appropriate by the city council, this ordinance is intended to clarify the discretion afforded to the city council. And whereas the director of procurement has recommended, and the mayor and city council desire to add a requirement for council approval of certain construction contract change orders, to add bids and proposals to all sections of 2.36, and to clarify that for a disposition contract for the disposition of unused real property, the city council will approve those provisions deemed necessary by the council, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that Chapters 2.32 and 2.36 of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended. Again, I assume you don't want me to read all those things, but they were described in the whereas clauses that I just read.
Right. That's fine. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2585 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carter, we have any requests for public comments?
No, we do not.
We do not? You guys are troopers.
Yeah.
I hope you don't have much homework for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for standing.
I have a comment, Jack.
Sure.
Maybe a week and a half ago, I'd like to thank the mayor and the chief in the Salisbury City Police for carefully coming to the call of duty, because there was an event that was going to take place. And when the phone call was made, the response was really overwhelming. And I thank the mayor, and the chief, and the Salisbury City Police for being there to keep something from happening that would have caused Salisbury great grief. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. If there's no other remarks, we're going to go to the order. I thank everyone for attending. We are adjourned.